Mr. Kelly, can you take the little call for America, please?
Yeah. Jomiake?
Here.
The Paul Litterer?
Here.
Lisa Tanya?
Here.
Mike Bojewson?
Here.
Mike Pierce?
Here.
And County. January 3rd. Myself, the attorney of water and health.
Thank you. The board met tonight in executive session to discuss various litigation matters and personnel matters as well. I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight to our conference meeting. We have a presentation tonight from Jake's Fireworks. After their presentation, I will take sit if comments. So Representative Jake Fong, please, before you come up to start.
Thank you, Mr. Jaras. John Jaras, on behalf of the applicant. I think it's working.
It is.
It is working. This application has been around for quite a while, and we find ourselves at the end of a land development plan application preliminary final. And I hope the board has in front of it a copy of a review letter by Contani Engineering dated January 31st, 2020. Essentially, this property began many years ago with the sale of retail fireworks to the general public, and there was also an apartment building on the property. And I believe two orders ago, there was an interest expressed by the then property owner, Mr. McMichael, who's with us this evening, of transferring the sale of fireworks from the smaller block building to a larger building that would be built in place of an apartment building on the property, which was somewhat blighted and attracted tenants less than desirable at the time. And it was expressed to Mr. McMichael and several property owners thereafter. That sounded like a good idea. Fast forward to a couple of years ago, when I became involved on behalf of the current property owner, Mr. Marietta, who is to my left, again approached the township, and in fact, Mr. Marietta approached the township before he retained me as counsel, and expressed an interest to carry on with that same idea, and was told at the time that as long as you don't take down that block building, that won't be considered land development. And in fact, a building permit application was filed with the township and accepted. And then at some point, there was a sentiment expressed that perhaps land development would be required. And so we've spent the last approximate two years pursuing this land development plan. And in that process, my client made a decision to keep the block building and attach it by breezeway to the new building to be built, but would agree that the smaller block building would not be used for the sale of fireworks nor the storage of fireworks, merely for office use. And that's where we find ourselves this evening. Fast forward again, the comment letter you have before you contains 10 comments. I believe none of those comments we can address, and we're happy to explore any of those with counsel if you so desire. I think the only comment with regard to the block building remaining is the only thing that may be worth further discussion, and we're here to try and answer any questions counsel may have in that regard. Does counsel have any questions with regard to the bricks and sticks and what's being proposed?
I do believe we have some questions tonight.
Sure.
And I'm going to have Commissioner Litterer start questioning. This is in Mrs. Paul within her ward, so I will let her start with the questions.
Certainly.
Thank you for coming this evening. My question is with regards to the existing building, from your main reference, that building also was supposed to be torn down. What happened with that?
Very fair question, ma'am. And again, what the original proposal was before I was even retained, was that the property owner was willing to take down that building and construct a new building. And as I said earlier, file a building permit application, was told by a couple township representatives at the time, that sounds logical, let's move forward. And at some point in discussions with staff after that, there was a decision made that, no, we think land development is required. So after expending a lot of time, effort, and resources in pursuit of this land development plan application, it was my client's decision to say, you know what? Maybe I'll keep that block building to use purely for office and not have to devote any space in the new building for office. And that's what we've done. That's essentially what the decision was.
Okay. Lisa, can we speak to any of the townships, please, referring to previous in our staff making recommendations of what should and should not be done?
I don't know that I have any comment. There's a little bit of origin to all of this, that larger building. We've had several meetings with this group over time. We had what we thought was an understanding. It was actually, although it's been noted, that it was the township's idea that that building be torn down. It was absolutely not. It was the contractor, don't call the name contractor, who down in Delaware, who said it would be much easier for them, better construction, if they could tear the building down. The caveat was, yes, you can tear that building down for safety reasons as well. And we, as the township, asked that that little building be removed. Remember, that little building initially was part of a gas station. So there is record of that here at the township. I believe that there's quite a bit of need of shares needed to that regard, which is why we had it in our review. I know that the planning commission also requested that that particular building come And our review letter speaks for itself. There were some issues that need to be resolved with PennDOT. There is pipeline that runs through the property. I've been told that the PennDOT did not want to see any, or excuse me, the pipeline did not want to see anything further. They had approvals from the pipeline. I don't, I haven't seen anything to that regard, and I don't want to put Steve on the spot because I know he's filling in for Mr. Hoopman. Matthew's actually doing the projects up. I don't know how much Steve would know about that, but I know from us doing the street skate project that we apparently will be talking about later in my report, that there is quite a few caveats that the pipeline has put on to the township with regard to just putting benches down. There are some changes that this group wants to make to the driveways or to the parking area. And that's about all I can tell you at this point from an engineering design standpoint. I had asked Mr. Hoopman to revise the parking area so that there was some green space. Those of us having line striping, they did that. We had asked that they took, take a look at the stormwater management, but the municipality didn't want to do stormwater management. That had been completed. And at this point, it will be before the board for a decision on whether or not it comes Thursday night.
Thank you.
So Lisa, if I could just briefly address the
Steve, can you?
Yes. Steve was soliciting, surveying, G2 minutes on. If I could just briefly address the pipeline information. Plans had been reviewed by quite a lot of people, and I don't have the department's copies of the approvals with me. Early on in the stages, we had some big plans, and there were some little shrubs and stuff that made it green areas, and all they asked us to do was remove it. They didn't want anything planted in their pipelines. And so if you look at the plan, landscape, that's why that whole corner in these areas are planted, and that was already covered with the original plans. We'll get you another. So it has been addressed.
Thank you.
So I think this, other commissioners can speak if they disagree with me, but it's my understanding that this board's understanding was, it was agreed that that small building was going to come down. So that's our understanding to date. As far as the old hotel or motel, whatever it was called before coming down, I think that was a wise decision to do. I don't think the building was adequate enough to make the renovations that was being suggested to do. So, I mean, I think I support that portion. But as far as the smaller building, it is the board's understanding that that was going to come down. So. Any other commissioners have any comments they were wanting to speak up?
If I could respond to that, again, the history of this property goes back quite some time, and this understanding puzzles us to some degree because the proposal that was made to the township staff when I was retained on behalf of the applicant was, we've got a site that's 99% covered with macadamia building. And my client, before purchasing the property, asked the question, can I transfer retail sales of fireworks from the smaller building to the new built building? And was told, yes, you can without going through land development, and relied on that representation and purchased the property. It was during the course of discussion with staff afterwards, again, that we were told, no, land development is now going to be required. And it was during that period of time where, again, a lot of resources were spent, that my client made the decision to try and keep the smaller building. So I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, but I'm not quite sure what the deal was for the benefit of the property owner, if that was the understanding going forward. What we had proposed was, please let us file something less than a full land development plan. I think what we turned a redevelopment plan because we were trying to improve a blighted property with regard to that apartment building. But again, I don't think anybody felt was in the best interest of the township to see continue. But it was during that time that we made the request, please let us file something less than a full land development plan. We'll take that small building down, we'll move forward, put up a brand new building. But again, it came back through discussion, sorry, we choose not to accept that. We want you to go through land development. So
Question.
It's yesterday.
Anything over 500 foot has to go through land development, right?
No, and let me explain our, the reason, and I'm not going to debate this with Mr. Jaras, but you had a building that was a motel, which at one point had a commercial, but it was currently a hotel, along with a smaller building that was commercial. Because, as Mr. Jaras actually says, it was a redevelopment, and there were significant improvements that were being on the property, under the municipality's planning code, that is considered a planned development under the definition that is considered a land development. That is why the decision was made. There isn't anything that this particular group had to do any differently than anyone else that's doing land development within the township. There's regulation there, you have a subdivision, land development ordinance, all that information is in that particular ordinance, and that's what we have to follow. We have to comply. We have to make sure that the developer is compliant with his particular regulations. And that's where we are.
And Ms. Contani, the only response I would have is, if that were the case, why it was represented to my client at the outset of discussions before purchasing the property, that land development would not be required if he did not take that small building down. And in fact, a building permit application was filed. A check for $13,700 accompanied that building permit application and was cashed by the township. So I guess I'd ask the question on behalf of my client, if land development was required from day one, why did the township make those representations to my client, which he relied on, and then accepted a building permit application?
And I can't answer that question because I am not a U C O.
Understood.
I was not there at the time. I will tell you that that is the policy of the township.
Understood.
So I can't answer why they, he did what he did.
Or if, or if those representations.
Yeah, or even if.
We have the application, we have the check.
I understand you have an application and you have a check. And there were also multiple discussions about the property and the fact that it was two separate lots and two separate businesses on a single lot, and it was a prior nonconforming use. And you will recall that the discussions were made to, A, join the two properties into a single property.
Which we did.
Which you did, which was all part of the overall concept of us having the smaller building removed so that the newer building would be there and would be the adequate parking representations. The township went over a number of different things, but the one thing that was consistent was that there was always going to have to be issues related to stormwater management and highway occupancy certificates. Your client, I don't know where he's getting the information that there would be no subdivision or land development application. That, again, predates me. I can't say yes, no, or maybe, but I think that the recollection and the notes of everybody that were present since Ms. Contani and I became involved were centered around demolition of the, what was going to be a renovation of the hotel, which was then changed into a demolition because of the footprint and because there were certain nonconforming aspects of the property where that hotel, where the base of that hotel was situated, with intrusions onto right of ways and other streets, that the best course of action was going to be to demolish an insufficient and dilapidated building, operate temporarily out of a smaller building until such time as the larger building was going to be completed, the two lots were joined, and that this property was going to be in a better position from a conformity perspective. That's my recollection of the meetings. It may not be yours.
Fair enough. So we find ourselves at a crossroads that after pursuing land development over the last year and a half, we have a zoning review letter that nine of these comments have been addressed or can be addressed. We have to file whatever permits we have to file with PennDOT, DEP, and/or the sewer authority. And I guess we're going to reach a point later in this meeting where the board is going to consider this land development plan and have to deny it for failure of abiding by a deal? That's my question. Because I would advocate that the zoning issues, the use issues, are not issues. The property has been put to the retail sales of fireworks for years, has been permitted year after year after year. The area bulk requirements either meet or are nonconforming with respect to the C1 district. We've done everything within our power to try and address water, sewer, stormwater issues. The plan is to hopefully beautify a property in the township with a brand new building. So I guess my question to counsel is, on what basis are we discussing the possible denial of the application? Because, well, we're trying to address every issue.
You have the review letter, and counsel will decide whether they're going to agree with that and agree what the situation was. If they don't, then you know what your rights are, so.
Let me ask you a question. What are the operating hours going to be? What time of year are you going to be open?
Per your township ordinance, you have to be open year round. We're required to fight a deal. We could be, we can never be closing within two weeks if we want to continue. So we are planning on operating year round as a business, absolutely selling fireworks. And we may sell, like we do Memorial Day flowers and some things like that, and if that, you know, if we're working in this instance, we would definitely look into that, obviously being an interstate store.
Can I interrupt you for a second? This is
The owner of the property. The other thing I wanted to address is that I was president, meeting Mr. Bolinger, assuming it was. I sat over there in that office over there when I came in and that was the most private emergency.
Oh, Brad Bolinger, okay.
Yeah, Brad Bolinger. I can also tell you that in the last few weeks, John spoke to Mr. Bolinger. He verified our memories of those meetings.
That is correct.
A former employee, the longer works for me, also verified the parts of that meeting. I mean, I think if it goes down that path you don't want to go, I think their statements will lead credence. I've got too much invested in this to come in here and not be truthful and honest and everything. That's what I've done since day one, trying to make this property work. I got no reason to lie. And I'm telling you, and I sat in that meeting with Mr. Bolinger, I bought that property on his advice that I would not have to go through land development. Period.
May I ask a question, since I wasn't part of this? Do you understand what Mr. Bolinger's position was in this township?
He was the building official at the time.
Okay. Do you understand what his responsibility is with regard to the township and what he oversees?
If you're going to ask me to name your organizational chart, no, I couldn't do it.
Mr. Ramon.
Yeah, Charles would also have been part of it.
Mr. Ramon.
Yeah, yeah. Between the two, I'm with Charles and then he's
You have a zoning officer that takes care of zoning. You have a building inspector who merely does building permit applications, but you did not have
Charles also approved it. He's the one that sent it to Brad.
He's the zoning officer.
Right, right.
And Charlie also is not one that will, that tells a, an applicant whether or not it needs to go through land development. Mr. Bolinger is merely what was called a building code official. He is responsible for building permits through UCC. He is not responsible to tell anyone whether or not it needs to go through land development. Okay?
And with all due respect, you've got a layperson meeting with township officials and being told and given a direction, not only given a direction, but told to file a building permit application to pursue the direction he was given. I would offer that if it was the township's policy to require land development, somebody should have said, we can't accept this building permit application. You're going to have to go through land development. And that wasn't done. Sure.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
You did say the parcel is now a single lot.
It is. When we started discussions with staff, there was a request, why don't you combine the two parcels into one? We acquiesced, so we filed a simple subdivision.
Well, let's be candid, you acquiesced because then you would have had a whole nother set of issues with setbacks. It was certainly in your best interest to have both parcels into
Well, let's also understand that the property had been improved as two lots, and if there were
That's a prior nonconforming use, as you
If there were issues, there was a position that they were not conforming. But with respect, we filed a simple subdivision.
The other question, what would your definition be of a lesser land development to be able to remove the building?
What would my definition be?
My definition of a less land development, to be able to remove the building?
I'll give you a perfect example. I represented a client in Kennetboro who wanted to open what's now known as the Creamery, a beer garden on a property. And that property was an old industrial property, and it had a building on it. But the building had to be rehabbed, had to be improved, and a parking lot had to be made around the building. The borough's first recommendation or direction was file a land development plan application. I argued that we're taking an existing property and we are improving it. We are not demolishing anything. We are working within the four walls of the building and going to improve macadamia around the building for parking, for the new use, the Creamery Beer Garden. The borough agreed with that. Their solicitor agreed with that, and ultimately said, we agree, it's not land development. Proceed. And we filed permits. It's in existence. Anyone's free to go. It's a thriving business right now. That was the way we approached this. We said, it's an existing site, it's 99% covered with macadamia building, we're trying to improve it. In fact, we'll even make more green grass areas on the property. So I respectfully, I understand Ms. Contani's position on that, but I respectfully disagree. And I believe the case law is somewhat unclear as to what can constitute land development on one occasion and what doesn't constitute land development on another occasion.
But you tried that position by the old hotel bar motel. We started taking it down, had four walls. That's not there anymore.
Correct.
So you can't compare the borough to this because there's no building in the park.
Well, we started to take it down. The intent was to try and work within the four walls, but then not knowing until you did take it down, that it was structurally unsound.
Which could, in the same position in the other borough on the other branch of Tulsa.
We never reached that
Never reached
Position. But, so what we're trying to, I think everyone in this room who knows this property would not disagree that that apartment building was something that should have come down. I don't think anyone's going to stand up and say, you should have never taken that apartment building down. But if it's the borough's direction that they choose to deny this application, then I guess one thing we could consider is keep retail sales of fireworks in the small block building and rebuild the apartment building and make it housing. That's another alternative. But we're trying to reach an accord to say, at the end of the day, when you put these legal issues aside, we're going to take a property that's going to make his business thrive and your township say, that's a nice property. And we would hope that's what, that's what the board would like to see in their municipality. Thank you. Sure.
Did you bring any plans or illustrations, any of what the new structure would look like?
That's a fair question. I did bring copies of the building permit plans that were filed many years ago. I don't have an artist's rendering, unfortunately. Hold on, wait, wait, wait. Please, I don't know if you have any
I'm looking through my email now, trying to see. Yes, sir.
This is not the best. I apologize, but these are building permit plans that kind of lay out
Let me just ask a question while she's looking.
Sure.
What's the advantage of keeping that old building and building another new one? Why? You wouldn't want to take that down and build one new building.
Because, that's a fair question. Because we are limited to the confines of this building to go over the footprint of the prior building. We're not enlarging. He has one floor to sell fireworks. If he can eliminate the need to make office space in this new building and put it over here If he can eliminate the need to make office space in this new building and put it over here, he has more floor area to sell fireworks, simple. And again, I want this understood fully. He's not trying to put one over on the township. He's saying, I will agree, no sale nor storage of fireworks in this old building. All I want to use it for is office. And again, we're trying to get our arms around all the issues. We would think, well, if the township has a concern that someone's going to try and get extra space to capitalize, those limitations would seem to address that issue. And we'll put that in writing, oh, whatever agreement Mr. Pierce wants to enter into on that, I'll build it. I'll be happy.
No, I think it was more of a, sorry, it was more of a, the expectation was that the building, that whole area was going to be cleared off for a new facility altogether, right? It's, that area is, is not, it's not, it's always kind of, kind of, I don't know what word. That area has not looked the best, right?
Right, agreed.
So we have, we just received a grant to improve that entire area, right? So we have this eyesore sitting there, right? So that, that is, that is the concern. So if, you know, the last time that we talked, and of course I wasn't a part of those, those discussions was that, but we're, we had expectations of improving the area and you're keeping that building, right? And then you're here tonight and I guess next week with no rendering of actually what you would hope to have it look like.
He's trying to pull that up and we apologize.
Okay, so we don't have any idea of what you are, what your advice, what your plans would be.
And it's a very fair question, and we did have rendering at prior meetings.
Mr. Jerris, so I, my very first stages was, was understanding that the building was going to be demolished.
Right.
It's a former gas station.
Right.
I've, I reviewed your plans way back when, and this is, this is the plan that you submitted, that you submitted tonight, correct?
That's a copy of what I believe.
Okay, well.
It could be modified.
On drawing CS1.
Uh-huh.
It points to the, the now gas station that's in the bay.
Right.
And it has a number one to it. And when I go to number one, underslate demolition, it says demolish existing fireworks, retail store building, or gas station building. So that was our understanding.
And that was the old plan. That was the old plan. Well, I'm not denying that that was the proposal in the beginning of this process.
So, so that was the plan that you submitted, that you talked about, that permit was issued and the check was cashed?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's our understanding.
No, wait, no, no, I apologize. The direction given when the permit was submitted, the application was submitted and the check cashed was as long as you don't demolish that building, it won't be considered land development.
No, let's characterize which building.
The small building.
No, no.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Michael, if I have to go depose Brad Bolinger, who told me on the phone, that's what.
You have your understanding of what it is. I'm looking at a plan that says demolish the small building that you just submitted to this board and said.
I submitted up.
Right, this is the plan.
I handed up a copy of a building permit set of plans to try and give Ms. Whitaker an understanding.
And that's what you just told the board in the beginning, that you submitted a building permit request with plans and a check, and the check was cashed. You just went through the plans and just looked at them, and it says, smaller building will be demolished. So, okay, I, I just want to make sure that we're clear as to which building you or your client or Mr. Bolinger indicated didn't have to be demolished. Because what I suspect was, the discussion was, that as long as you don't demolish the apartment building, you won't have to go to subdivision and.
Let me see if I can clear it up for you. Let me ask the property owner, who's owned it for how long?
Since 2008, I've owned it since 2008.
Could you please enlighten Mr. Pierce as to what it may have been discussed?
I had, I'm standing, Michael. I had discussions in 08, 09 about changing the layout of the property. I owned it when it had the apartments, the old hotels, the old restaurant bar, with the 10 apartments and a bunch of trash. The township came to me and said, get rid of the tenants and we'll let you change it to one use. I had apartment in the beginning, it'd be used for the existing store, the fireworks, and the apartments. Two apartments at the same time. I was asked to get rid of the apartment tenants, and we did that. They said if I did that, I could have one use on the property fireworks. We can say which building it's in. I hadn't decided at that point, but I combined them, but I have one mixture, one use when I'm done. So that's what we did, got rid of the apartments, the tenants, took me almost a year to get rid of. So that, from day one, the agreement was with Mr. Bolinger and Charlie Ramalik, that get rid of the tenants and you can have that property for one use. That's what we began to do in 2008. Shirey came in and did the same thing, and Mr. Reddick did the same thing. Based by my beginnings, two, one use, two buildings, to one use. That was my goal, that's what the township asked me to do. And they said I didn't have to do land development, I know what they want, so I do for them. No land development required, he said, just get rid of the apartments. I did that, and I told the buyers that, and they've been trying for two years to get rid of that. They never ever had requests for land development, just get rid of the apartments, and I'm using the property.
Who from the township told you to get rid of tenants?
Oh, Mr. Bolinger.
Mr. Bolinger said get rid of the tenants.
He brought it up to me. So they've been trying to get rid of that place for years, get rid of them, and you can use the property for fireworks. I already had two apartments to use it.
You think I would call him and ask him that question?
Yes.
That, that, that.
Absolutely.
That, that he would say that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And asked Charlie Ramalik, we had a lot of discussions about that. I told him I was, I started to do it, they knew I was doing it. I dared, yeah, he had to do it. I do believe he'd say that, yes. I believe Charlie Ramalik said the same thing.
So were you the fire, the owner before this gentleman?
I was the first owner.
So then there was somebody in the middle.
That's correct, Mr. Shirey. He came at the same time, he presented plans based on what I told him, and he spoke to, I'm not sure who he spoke to. He spoke to people here before he bought it. Uh, he, he began to do the same thing, and he sold it to his brother.
Okay, well, I think the board has gotten a bit of flavor of what's going on. Some, some, some of the things that were said here tonight is hearsay. Because, you know, I have no knowledge with people of my, of people I work with in townships.
I'm sure.
You know, get rid of tenants and we'll do what you want to do. So that's all hearsay, okay? Because none of them are here tonight to confirm that. I just want to get that on, on the record. So, am I dates correct? We had until February 17th to make the, to make the decision. You know, the board will discuss this, we'll most likely make our decision next week. We're not taking a vote tonight, because I heard you earlier tonight saying, well, we were going to make, make a decision. That's not, that is, that is not going to happen tonight.
Could I ask, we're, we appear later in the agenda, so I assume there won't be any discussion later? Should we say?
Uh, we're not going to vote on it.
Okay.
So it's, it's under my report again.
My suggestion would be any, any discussion that, yeah, take place now and then Jerris and his colleagues will leave.
I mean, as far as.
Further discussion at the end.
As far as I'm concerned, my report is just going to dictate that we, we have already covered all of Jay's fireworks. But I don't.
Appreciate that.
Discuss it, any, any further. But I, but I want to make a quick, quick.
Sure, thanks.
Quick, quick comment, and then I want to take any comments from the citizens just on this topic. And then afterwards, after I adjourn this meeting, we'll go to our regular meeting. So go ahead, Mr. Jerris.
Thank you, two quick points. Number one, we are trying to propose street beautification on this site. I heard it mentioned earlier. I know there's things like streetlights, landscaping. So again, that comes with this as well. And secondly, if there's a concern that that building may look inappropriate next to the new building that's being constructed, which I handed up the artist's renderings of what we hope it looks like, Mr. Marrieta advised me that he's willing to shell exterior facade, both buildings, so they appear the same. Again, to try and make it look a little bit nicer for the township. Thank you for.
Thank you.
I just got one more question. Why would there be a breezeway between two buildings?
That's the only connection we felt was appropriate. We didn't want to enclose anything, we didn't want to.
What is the connection?
Between them.
To the front. Those people, those people.
To try and make it.
That has an office door, why would people?
Where were the officers?
Why are you going to have sales inside that new building?
Correct, sir, but people may have to, employees, manager, whatever, may have to walk from this building, so we put a breezeway. That's it, just a.
To keep them away from elements?
Yes.
I said to keep them, to keep them away from, you know, the brains.
Correct, correct, yes, absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Jerris. So I'll take any sense of comments on this topic. Anybody from the right side of the room that would like to come up and speak? Anybody from the opposite side? Just for your, for the record, please state the name and address.
Michael Armstrong, 42 Broadway Avenue. I know you're trying to run a business, that's fine. But the point is, when you're selling the fireworks and people are buying them, and then people go to set them off, the cops are called all the time, it's continuously. It seems like we can't do it in the township. It's not, because then they sell the fireworks, they're putting out the money, and then people go to set them off and they're toxic. The rules can break. I know you have to be 150 feet away, but then I heard someone about that they were going to make you pay, you had to pay something for like, if you asked somebody to do it on the property, it's also 150 feet away, that's what I heard. That you would have to pay, um, something for it. And is that true?
You mean pay.
It seems like the cops don't want it in, in Upper Rochester.
Okay.
But I heard that they're not, they, every time somebody goes to set one off, the cops are called.
With, with all due respect, Ms. Armstrong, this doesn't have anything to do with the land development.
No, no.
That's fireworks regulation, which is a completely separate topic.
Okay, all right.
Any others that could come up and speak? All right, so Mr. Jerris, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for the time.
Guys, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, if you want to hear other business. Other than that, this topic will be closed for this evening.
Thank you, and it will be entertained next week.
It will be entertained next week.
That's Thursday?
That's Wednesday, Thursday, correct.
If you have any objection.
Thank you.
Yep.